Good evening, everyone. It's very nice to see all of your lovely faces this evening. The December 6th meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors will now come to order. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser.
Here.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes, here.
Mr. Oats.
Here.
Mr. Fiero.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mrs. Morris. Dr. Hartsfield.
Here.
And Ms. Robinson.
Here.
For the record, the chair wishes to note that board member Natalie Lewis will be participating remotely this evening. There is a quorum present. Is there any objection to the approval of the agenda? If not, the agenda is approved. At this time, we are pleased to recognize Dr. Bedell to introduce those who are present concerning Northeast Middle School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to have Principal Cleora Taylor to come up and conduct the Welcome to Northeast Middle School presentation.
To Superintendent Dr. Bedell, the Kansas City Public School Board, the Superintendent's Cabinet, and all of our wonderful guests who are here tonight, I would like to extend to you a big welcome to Northeast Middle School.
All right.
As Superintendent Dr. Bedell stated, my name is Cleora Taylor, and I am the extremely proud principal of this great learning institution. And we are delighted that you have chosen to spend your evening with us. At this time, we have a special greeting from a few of our students who would like to welcome you as well. Please enjoy.
Hello, my name is Morgan LaRosa. Jumbo, jirarango ni monika.
Hello, yuni we amu sa.
Minna bagarama saba.
Jumbo, sala khae giro.
I am from Kansas City, SPO.
I am from Kansas City, SPO.
I am from Kansas City, SPO.
I have lived here all my life.
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 Fantastic. If there are any members from our Northeast Middle School staff, if you could stand and be recognized at this time, if we have any parents, parents please stand. We have a couple of students over here. Thank you. These are members of our Northeast Middle School family, and I am honored, so honored, to serve them. Let's give them another round of applause for all of their hard work and support. Well, in this past spring, our staff convened and redeveloped and recrafted our mission statement. So now as a cohesive unit, we are all committed to achieving excellence in academic, behavioral, and social development, as well as by providing a safe, fun, and supportive environment for all of our students. And it is paramount to us that we provide an environment that is so positive where all of our faculty, all of our students, all of our parents, and all of our community members are running to get in and not running to get out. So we are really happy about the new mission statement, and we're all committed to making sure that we uphold what we say we're gonna do. So who do we serve? Currently, we have 757 students comprising of seventh and eighth graders. And what makes us unique, what makes us stand out and so special, is the multitude of ethnicities that we serve. We have a student, uh, we have a student population that is a part of our gifted program. We service special ed population, and we have 350 English language learners. And of those 350 students, they speak 30 different languages. Somebody say wow.
Wow.
Yeah, and that, isn't that fantastic? Go ahead and clap to that. Because we embrace and we celebrate diversity, and that's what sets us apart. And the top, the top four languages that the majority of our students speak are Spanish, Somali, Swahili, and Burmese. So we love our diversity, we embrace our diversity, and we are proud to say how diverse we are. So in our state assessment, please know that we increase and show growth in every single area on the math test. And we would like to give a special highlight for our Algebra I students. We had one section of Algebra I students for our eighth graders, and we know commonly that's a ninth grade subject. But our students were not dazzled and frazzled and saw that as any inferiority at all, because they showed up, showed out, and 72% of our students show proficiency and growth in proficiency and advanced categories. So 72% scored in the proficient and advanced categories. So we are real happy and we applaud our eighth grade math teachers and students who worked so hard with our students. And it's also important to note that this year, we have two sections of Algebra I students.
That's great.
So we also need to applaud our seventh grade teachers who are getting our students ready, because it is important to us that we continue to push and increase our numbers so students have access to higher level coursework. So let's applaud our math department for doing such a great job. And our goal is to see those numbers continue to increase, increase, increase every year. Now, we recognize that the growth that our students have shown is not really what we'd like it to be. So we have put in place some supports to help our students increase and improve academically. So for our English language learner students, we have sheltered classrooms. This means that students are receiving all four of their core subjects in a sheltered classroom from an English language learner teacher. And this course, what's special about it is that it focuses on language development as well as it provides our students with a modified curriculum. That way, they're able to assess the curriculum at the language proficiency, proficiency as opposed to the grade level proficiency. So another way that we are providing support for our ELL students is that every ELL teacher is TESO certified. Now, that big acronym stands for Teaching English to Speakers of Other Languages. So that simply means that every ELL teacher is highly qualified to teach and service our ELL population. Another level of support is our self-contained classes for our new Americans. Now, in our self-contained classes, all four core subjects are taught by the same teacher, and it's specifically designed for those students who have never had formal public schooling, which means that a lot of our students, even though they're 11 years old, 12 years old, 13 years old, a lot of them are refugees, and so they never went to school in their home country. So we take those students, and they're in one classroom, and we provide support as they master the English language. Another level of support is we have cultural celebrations throughout the year, and this is a time where we celebrate the differences among all the cultures. And we highlight the students' diversity, and it also allows for us to have a cohesiveness among all the different, different ethnicities in our building that we serve. In our ELL classrooms, we also have two paraprofessionals, one that speaks Arabic and the other that speaks Swahili. And these two paraprofessionals work inside the classrooms and are able to help assist with those language barriers that many of our students may be faced with. And what's special about our paraprofessionals is that they're able to bring their own personal experiences into the classroom, because both of them, too, were once English language learners. So they're able to relate to the students and provide that extra support. And also, as I stated before, we have a modified curriculum for our students where they're able to grapple with the curriculum on their language proficiency as opposed to their grade level proficiency. So for our general educational population, we have after-school tutoring for our students. We have City Year in our building who provides a big support. They are in our students' classrooms, they're helping our teachers co-teach, they're also working one-on-one with students, they even pull out students to work one-on-one with them, and also have small group instruction and tutoring for those students as well. We have a Title I paraprofessional, and this person is hard to specifically help in English as well as mathematics for our students. Now, we know how important it is that student must be in school in order to really receive the maximum benefit of their education. So our Titan Academy allows students to remain in school and focus on their academics while being held accountable for their actions. We also provide an additional class period, extra support in our English classes and our mathematics classes. And that SNAP stands for Student Needing Assistance, Needing Additional Practice. So those classes are specifically designed for science, so we have additional science support as well as social studies support. So we have four core subjects that we are providing an extra class period for all of our students in order for them to increase academically. Now, we have seven, 74 staff members, which means that I can't do it alone. I have some help. I would like to introduce you to my awesome help. I have an awesome and outstanding administration team. I would first like to bring up and introduce Ms. Dawn Philip-Simon, who will come and share with you some of our school's initiatives.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Dr. Bedell, Board, Cabinet, and honored guest. I'm here tonight to discuss our initiatives here at Northeast Middle School. Every initiative that we take on, we tie directly to the strategic directives of our school and our district. The first initiative is our PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Support. We are proud, and I mean proud, to make a difference in this school with our students through positive rewards and reducing the number of out-of-school suspension time for them and implementing and increasing academic instruction time. The next initiative is through our restorative justice. Restorative justice is also new for us this year. Currently, our seventh grade level is having it implemented the first semester, and our eighth grade level will begin second semester. On Wednesdays, in addition, there is a conflict resolution group for students in that need. Our third initiative is our composting initiative. We are the pilot program for the middle schools in the district, and this ties directly to the strategic plan 2.4, which allows our students to become critical thinkers and real-world problem solvers. We try to instill in the students minimizing your carbon footprint and becoming very responsible citizens through ecology. The next initiative is our success mentors. Our success mentors is new for us this year, and we are working in a direction of positive. Currently, we have 24 students in the program, 15 with mentors. Half of those students have shown growth in their GPAs for the second quarter. What's new for us and what's important and makes us unique here is that our peer mentor, our students have peer mentors from the high school, from Northeast High School. And Colonel Hilliard accompanies them here once a week to meet with our students. Having said that, I'd like for you to have an opportunity to hear how successful this program is for our students. I have two students here this evening that would like to speak to that. Please help me welcome two of our mentees, Mr. Devon Stewart and Mr. Stephen Kirsch. Mr. Stewart will speak first.
Good evening. My name is Devon Stewart, and I'm a part of the Success Mentor Program. During my time in the program, I have learned a lot about being a leader and a scholar. We have discussed my future goals in being a pro athlete and what it takes to get me to the next level. Getting firsthand knowledge of what it would take has been highly beneficial for me. I also now understand that my grades are highly important as it relates to becoming a pro athlete, because my mentor is very active in sports himself. Currently, I have been taught to also have a background plan in case my first dream does not work out. Also, I'm learning that I can utilize other people's experiences and mishaps, which allows me to have a much clearer path within my direction of life. Also, within the program, I understand that there are multiple resources that I will have the ability of utilizing. I also understand the concept of networking and what that truly means for my future. I look forward to my continued participation in the program, and I am happy to be a part of the Success Mentor Program. Now, I would like to introduce Mr. Stephen Kirsch.
My name is Stephen Kirsch, and I am also a part of the Success Mentor Program. Prior to starting the program, I was consistently absent from school, but I have been making strides to make that a thing of the past. Currently, every day, I feel that my mentality is becoming stronger, because I know that my mentor continues to hold me accountable for my actions. It also, it's also a good feeling to know that someone cares about me and is willing to check on me. Currently, I have not picked a career, but during our sessions, we continue to revisit this subject. Me being able to speak with other mentees also helps me gather my thoughts on future goals and aspirations for the near future. Also, within the program, I will have the ability to meet people that perform multiple job duties, and I feel this will also be highly beneficial to me picking out a career for myself. I'm also understanding how important my grades are in relations to my future plans in life. I look forward to my continued participation in the program and am happy to be a part of the Success Mentor Program.
Great job, Stephen. Good job. I would like to introduce Justin Strong. Justin, wave your hand to the people. All right, Justin Strong oversees our Success Mentorship Program. So he works hard with all of our mentees, so we're happy to have him spearheading that for us. Well, I have some other help. So I would like to introduce to you another extremely proud Vice Principal of Northeast Middle School, Mr. Bakari Ukuku.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Dr. Bedell, and community members. Let me first say how elated I am to be able to serve the students and families and community at Northeast Middle School. Tonight, I'll be telling you a little bit about our after-school programs and community partners. We know that student investment in school is critical, and one high-leverage way to get students more motivated and invested in their academic performance is through after-school clubs, activities, and sports. Because of this belief, our teachers have truly stepped up to the plate to be able to offer these robust opportunities for our scholars. Ranging from the Makers Club, which is a club where our students can come and learn to make crafts from around the world, to our award-winning Science Club, which last spring brought home multiple awards from the Kansas, the Greater Kansas City Science and Engineering Fair, to our boys soccer team, which this past season won second place in the KC Metro Championship Conference. So we are super excited. We are super excited to be able to offer these opportunities to our students. We know that after-school clubs, activities, and sports provide meaningful connections and relevant connections to school. It improves social development and ultimately gives them lifelong positive memories of school, and we know that our students need more and more positive memories of school. We know that we cannot and do not do this work alone. And so we want to take a moment to recognize our community partners that joined us in this work to really transform outcomes for our scholars. I want to take an opportunity to highlight two of our community partners that have been very critical to our success this year. Community America is our current sponsor for our City Year team. If we have any City Year members in the audience, shout out to you all for the work that you do with our schools. Through their partnership and sponsorship of our City Year team, they donated over 800 solar eclipse glasses for us this year so that our scholars could safely enjoy the solar eclipse, which we had a perfect view of right out here near our soccer field. Secondly, we want to take an opportunity to highlight our communities and school partnership. Our community and school director, Ms. Burgett, has been invaluable to our team. She consistently serves our families and our students in going above and beyond to make sure they have the basic needs they need to make sure they can come ready to learn to school. We know that the support of our community partners constantly serves as a reminder to us that the love and belief in our students expands beyond our school and expands beyond the homes of our students. Their support continues to remind us that we are here with a purpose and that we are here for a great cause. We are always welcoming to any of those who want to join us in the fight and in the work to really transform outcomes for our students. With that, I'll turn it back over to our extremely proud principal, Ms. Taylor.
Well, in conclusion, we would like to highlight and showcase some of our student talent. So at this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Markley, who is our elective chairman, who will direct our student body, members from our student choir, in a musical selection. And please, amen. Receive them as they come. And again, welcome, welcome, welcome. Again, thank you for choosing us, and we are delighted that we are sharing your evening. Thank you.
Thank you for reminding us why we do this work. It's amazing, grounding experience. The chair now recognizes Dr. Bedell to give superintendent recognitions.
Thank you, and at this time, I would ask our communications department will come up, and we're ready to get started. So, Justin?
Thank you, Dr. Bedell, members of the board. I would like to start in honor of Dr. Bolden and Ms. Taylor, saying I am Justin Robinson, the extremely proud director of the Kansas City Public Schools Communication Office. So we're gonna start tonight with recognitions with our scholar superstars. These are students who exemplify the great things being accomplished in our schools every day. We're thrilled to introduce a huge contingent of these superstars who excel in academics and athletics. First, please welcome KCPS Athletic Director, Coach James Sanders, who will introduce student athletes and their coaches who have garnered regional and state accolades. Coach Sanders?
Good evening, everyone, and yes, I am standing. I appreciate it so much for having this opportunity tonight, but one thing I want to say when the... the board four years ago said that we could start middle school athletics, that's what's happening today. Those middle schoolers that we said four years ago could start are now sophomores, and now we're seeing the fruits of the tree blossom, and we're getting better. So, I'd like to also introduce my assistant A.D., Coach Doyle, who stayed in there. So first, we're going to, we're first going to introduce the Northeast Soccer Team. The Northeast Soccer Team is the second defending champion of the IL last year and this year. They also won their district, and they were one goal short of going to state. If they would come up forward, please.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, East. I know I made Mr. Bolden really proud. Extremely proud, should I say. So can I have the East Soccer Team up front, please? And I'd like to say about the East Bears, their head coach originally was a football coach. So, over the years, he's changed the, from a square ball, should I say, to a round ball, and I want to say, he's done an exceptional job on that. The next person I'd like to introduce from East High School, this young lady is a freshman. And she started out the year, and she, hold on, I'm having, I'm having M.L., mental lapse. Let's do the boy. I'm sorry, it's a gentleman from East High School who's a freshman. He's a freshman, and he started running this year, and he's ran in the past. He has went, he went to state this year as a freshman out of a hundred and, hold on, let me get the number. Coach Bear, can you come up for a moment, please? He's a, he's a cross-country coach for East High School. Coach Bear is also the Coach of the Year for East High School in cross-country. So, I'm not really good with names, so I'm going to have Coach Bear do it, but out of 167 runners in the boys' cross-country, as a freshman, he placed 74th.
Well, Coach, you are right, you're not very good with names. That's Patrick Brier. But, okay, that's close enough. I'd like to introduce Aneshmadine Ahmed. Thank you very much.
Coach, can you get your plaque here? Now, a little bit about Coach. This is Coach's third or fourth year being the cross-country coach at East High School. Prior to Coach taking that position, East High School had one or two cross-country runners. Since Coach has taken over that, over that program three or four years ago, he now has an average between 35 to 40 cross-country runners a year. Okay, now to Lincoln. This young lady, this is, this is one of our A.D.s, this is our middle school A.D. This young lady started running middle school. One thing I'd like to say, I know I'm not, when you saw the athletes talking about here, that's what we build. We're building friendship, and we're building relationships. This young lady started running in the middle school program over at Lincoln. As a freshman this year, out of 165 young ladies that ran, she placed 105th. I'd like to have her coach come up. Coach is also the A.D. at Lincoln College Prep. For our board members that don't know, Lincoln and several of our schools have a high, high school, have a high school A.D. and a middle school A.D. Zack is the middle school A.D. If you do the honors, please.
We have a freshman girl who finished in the state finals where Coach said that she did. I'd like to introduce to you Story Downing, who placed 105th out of 165 runners. And you might think, well, you should have seen the rates. Okay? You've got 165 kids, and in between 165 and 105, there might have been, I think in her case, it was a couple minutes, but you're talking about seconds, just seconds. It's the craziest thing I've ever seen, and I've coached a long time.
Also, Story was Runner of the Year in the IL as well. Now, our final, it's not really final because I intend to be back here in the fall or in the winter sports because we may have great news then, too. For, for, folks don't know it, we started soccer probably about 30 or 40 years ago in the district, and it was started by Coach Sasser. And up until this point, we have never had anybody pass districts until this year. I'd like to introduce the state runner-up in Class 2 Lincoln College Prep Soccer Team. Ladies and gentlemen, also, I'd like to tell you that their coach is not here today. He had a family emergency. Coach Lucas was voted the IL Coach of the Year, and also, Coach Lucas has another award that's really special. Coach Lucas was named the Small High School Coach of the Year in the National Soccer Association, Also, our Player of the Year for Soccer is Roberto Ramirez. One other thing, folks. The soccer team, they wanted to make something special for Dr. Bedell. So the Lincoln College Soccer Team would like to present the ball to Dr. Bedell for their first, for the first time, a soccer team has made it to state. I'd like to thank the board members for giving us this opportunity to speak tonight and recognizing our kids, and right now, our wrestling teams are doing really well. If you happen to go by Central, we've got a whole lot of girls of the water. We've probably got 35 or 40 girl swimmers this year amongst the high schools. Our Lincoln Girls Basketball Team is ranked second in the state of Missouri. And the best is still yet to come. Thank you so much for your support, we appreciate it. Good night.
Thank you, Coach Sanders. As many of you know, Coach Sanders was Assistant Athletic Director for several years in the district. When Dr. Bedell promoted him to Athletic Director this summer, he had a coaches meeting, and I was there, and he gave a passionate speech to all the coaches for fall sports. He said, "Go out and get us one. Get us to state, get us one team to state, and watch what happens in this school district." Well, Coach, you got a few there, and we're looking forward to see what's happening going forward. So once again, thank you, Coach Sanders, and congratulations to all these incredible students for their accomplishments. Next, no, we're not done, not even close. Next, we're going to recognize another group of equally astounding scholars who demonstrated a truly remarkable level of academic achievement this fall, the KCPS Mathletes. Great math skills and teamwork added up to success for 78 KCPS students who participated in the 8th Annual Prep KC Regional Math Relays on Saturday, November 4th, at Grandview High School. More than 400 students from across the region participated in this event, including those from Central Academy of Excellence, Central Middle School, East High School, Foreign Language Academy, and Lincoln College Preparatory Academy, along with Northeast High School. Here to tell you more about this event and our Mathletes, please welcome KCPS Math Curriculum
Good evening, everyone. Before I start, my request are students, math teachers, and building administrators of the schools represented. I am proud to present to you the KCPS Math Team, who competed this year in the Regional Math Relays at Grandview High School last November 4th. Schools represented in this team are Central Academy of Excellence, Central Middle School, East High School, Foreign Language Academy, Lincoln College Prep, and Northeast High School. A total of 425 students from 18 schools in KCK and KCMO competed with each other in the different divisions in algebra, geometry, data, number sense, and ACT. Overall, KCPS earned a total of 46 awards. This is 12 more than the awards we received last year. For two years in a row, KCPS students from Lincoln College Prep won the top award for the most rigorous and challenging event, the Sigma Marathon. Students in this category would compete in seven stages, just solving math problems for the whole day. This year's first-place winner is Nathan Hewitt, a senior at Lincoln College Prep. He was awarded a $500 scholarship to any college of his choice. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our students, our math teachers, for making KCPS proud of you, and also to our building administrators for the support you have extended to the math team.
One more round of applause for the Mathletes, please. Tonight, we are also honoring individuals and organizations who help our schools succeed. KCPS Partnership and Community Engagement Manager, Ms. Amara Crawford Herrera, is going to introduce our community champions.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Bedell, Cabinet, and KCPS community. It is my pleasure to share information about tonight's community champions, awardee, the International Union of Painters Allied Trades District Council III. There we go. Representing a force of over 160,000 active and retired men and women in the U.S. and Canada, IUPA T-member skills are in high demand at every construction project in North America. The men and women of District Council III have been active in the metro area since 1916. IUPA T-membership extends far beyond just the workplace. Recognized as one of the most active unions in the labor, in the labor movement, IUPA T-members help shape their communities in many ways through an abiding commitment to service. This commitment led them straight to Kansas City Public Schools in Banneker Elementary. Not just focused on getting a basic job done, the IUPA T District III has always been committed to going above and beyond for their community, for their community. For their Community Day of Action, District Council III reached out to partner with Banneker Elementary to improve their school, recognizing that their talents and skills could make a deep impact. Upon reaching out to Harrison Neal, Banneker Principal, DC III realized that they could go much further than just fulfilling the requests of painting the interior of the school building. In addition to interior painting, these champions took on two empty tracts of land in front of the school, cleaning out the area and putting in a rock formation on each side that spells out the name of the school. Undaunted and unsatisfied with their already hard work, the council pursued a $25,000 grant from the union's charitable foundation to supply students and teachers with backpacks filled with school supplies. Spending a hot evening in August, DC III members spent several hours filling those backpacks to be delivered to Banneker in time for back-to-school night. Oh, there's more, they did more. Tireless in their support of student and community achievement, DC III worked on behalf of Banneker to pursue an additional $40,000 grant from the American Federation of Teachers to purchase over 4,000 books for the school, ensuring that every classroom received new books. When asked about their partnership with Banneker and Kansas City Public Schools, DC III's Steve Woodson replied, "We're committed to helping in any way that we can. We've adopted that school, and we want to see it do well." So we'd like to say thank you to the IUPA T for all that you've done to support the lives of KCPS schools and students. Please accept this community champion certificate on behalf of Kansas City Public Schools and for all that you do for KCPS students and families. And thank you for recognizing that our schools cannot do it alone and for saying yes to partnering with KCPS. So, it's also a good time to mention that they're providing five hundred hats for winter for the students at Banneker as well.
All right, now we're moving to Terrific Teammates. We're time to honor the team KCPS member who consistently demonstrates a positive attitude, support of student achievement, execute their assignments with excellence, and then shows initiative, and here's to procedures. Again, we call this section Terrific Teammates. Our first Terrific Teammate of the night is Latanya Daniels, the school nurse at Foreign Language Academy. Ms. Daniels, please join me at the podium. Latanya was nominated by KCPS Nursing Services Manager Lauren Grimes. This spring, the student was brought to Ms. Daniels' office with signs of difficulty breathing. Tanya asked the student if she has asthma and the student can barely mumble the words "yes." Tanya is sensing something else was wrong and she figured out that the student was choking on a jawbreaker. So, although still getting a small amount of air, the student was not getting enough and would be in serious danger unless something was done quickly. Ms. Daniels' training and experience kicked in and she used the Heimlich maneuver to remove the jawbreaker and save the student's life. Aside from being a hero, Tanya performs at an exemplary level every day. She is knowledgeable, caring, and supportive. Ms. Daniels, thank you for your outstanding service in the Kansas City Public Schools. And next, for our final recognition of the night, we have an extraordinary Terrific Teammate to introduce. And this teammate has no idea that they're about to get brought up to the podium. Mr. Jerry Kitsey, can you please join me up here? Jerry Kitsey has currently serves as our Director of Head Start and Early Learning. But over many years, he has had a positive impact across the school system and the rest of this community. This month, Jerry has taken his well-earned retirement from KCPS. And I just messed up the PowerPoint. We need this for a second. So, Tom, can you bring this back up? So, we want to take just a few minutes to honor him and recall some of his many contributions. Jerry has worked in this community for forty years. That includes more than three decades in the areas of philanthropy and early learning. He became an expert in early learning while working with the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation, the Kaufman Foundation, the Francis Family Foundation, and Metropolitan Community College. At a time when he could have retired, he decided to come to KCPS and help make significant improvements to our Head Start and Early Learning program. At the time Jerry was hired, Mark, the Mid-American Regional Counsel, had given us ninety days to comply with terms and conditions of an improvement plan. That was issued in October of twenty-twelve and Jerry began work in November of twenty-twelve. Well, we had over two thousand findings in our Head Start audit. Other highlights of Jerry's tenure at KCPS include opening two early childhood community schools, the first of their kind in Kansas City, opening fourteen Missouri preschool project classrooms in KCPS, opening a teen-infant program at Central Academy of Excellence, raising more than five million dollars annually for early learning programs, and leading the advocacy effort for universal pre-K and pre-K expansion levy. That's just a sample of what he's done and been able to do and accomplished during his years of service at Kansas City. We're going to finish our recognitions with the video put together by the communications team with some of the people who have worked with Jerry over the years.
Apologies.
Jerry, I tried to think of something very profound to say to you. But what do you say to a man who doesn't even remember me twenty, from twenty years ago? What do you say to a man who repeatedly made me, a very well-known, non-morning person, wake up with the roosters just so I could go to Jeff City in Columbia with you? You say, "Thank you."
Jerry, on behalf of the staff, the families, and the students of the Kansas City Neighborhood Academy, I thank you for all of your hard work that you did to bring this vision to reality. Thank you so much for the support that you offered, all of the hard work you did with Desi and everyone to really give us a smooth start as a school. We couldn't have done it without you.
Jerry was one of the few persons, when I had my personal star, who was right there with me, who stood with me, who supported me, and was always, I don't want to use comforting, but provided me with a spirit.
You are truly the real deal and you embody the number-one question campaign, "Is it good for the children?" And there's only one answer, "Yes." Every time you had a difficult decision to make, you always made it with the best interest of children in mind. And I think that's one of the things that draws me, drew me, and continues to draw me closer to you as a friend. We've been friends, we've been colleagues, and I really appreciate the years we've spent in partnership.
We appreciate you, we love you, and we're gonna miss you.
I've learned a lot from Jerry. He's just a terrific colleague. I think as I think about Jerry Kitsey, I think about words like integrity, commitment, mission-driven. I've watched him through his entire career move from job to job, key leadership roles around our city, each one focused on young children, low-income families, and opportunities, so.
I wish you the best of luck and I know that the children and families in this community are much better because you were involved.
Thank you, Jerry, for listening to the sister when you were in eighth grade. Thank you for agreeing to come to work at the district. Thank you for making a difference in the lives of so many children and families. Thank you for guiding and supporting me for the last five years. Thank you for being the man that everyone told me you were all those years ago. But most importantly, thank you for being my friend.
I'm proud to know you. I want you to know I have a tremendous amount of respect for you and I want to wish you nothing but best of luck in your hunting and fishing and all of that. And hey, bring me some of that fish. You know I like fish. Take care.
Since I'm a short timer, I'm gonna take advantage of the moment here because there's a couple of people or a couple of groups that I need to recognize. Usually, I only get compliments like that from my mom, and so, thank you for those kind words. And you all know, nothing happens by a single person administrator. I have a leadership team who now I have to question some of their motives that really make, they do the heavy lifting every day. I'm just along for the ride. But there's another group that I need to recognize tonight because this may be the last time that I speak in front of the board. And, uh, and it's you. Three things have happened over the last forty to fifty years that moved early childhood education forward. In nineteen seventy-three, Penn Valley was created and it had three Associate Applied Science degrees. One was in Child Growth and Development. It was the first of its kind in the state of Missouri. We had one graduate and the program was called Nursery School Management Personnel. Until then, it was babysitting. Despite all we knew about early brain development, there was no real career path in early learning until the college made that decision. So, the trustees at Penn Valley were critical. But we only had one graduate that first year. We averaged two for twenty years, two a year. Not much of a pipeline to make the field better. John and Mary Harris Francis came along in ninety-five and they created the Francis Institute, put five million dollars into the college to build the institute so we could have a pipeline. I was at Kaufman Foundation then and I remember thinking, "Wow, they just need some scholarship money if something could happen." Kaufman gave a million dollars. Within three years, there were fifty-five students graduating with an associate degree from Penn Valley in Child Growth and Development. So, they were the second most important spark that made things happen in Kansas City. And that decade of investment that they started, we got a quality rating system, we've got an accreditation project, a lot of investment happened, but then things trailed off. Things go in cycles until two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. And that's when the School Board of Kansas City Public Schools took bold action. You passed Board Policy 1.1 that said all scholars will be socially, emotionally, and academically ready. And then you passed a resolution that called for the creation of a commission to study what would it take to get every three- and four-year-old in a high-quality early learning program. And that spark got the chamber involved, got the mayor involved. And we've been running for enabling legislation for the last three years. I know Saturday, there's gonna be a vote by a major foundation that's gonna make five hundred thousand dollars available for a campaign for this community to understand how important early learning is. And it's gonna happen. We're gonna have either by property tax or by sales tax, we are gonna have universal access to pre-K. Would have never happened had you not provided that spark. So, I want you to know how proud I am of this board and this administration. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the children and families. Thank you for hiring me. Thank you very much.
No, this isn't, I don't like following scripts. But for all of you in here that grew up watching Jerry Springer Show, I just want to do a quick chant. So, let's all come together. Jerry, 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 Jerry.
And now for our regular business items, the chair recognizes Dr. Baddell for any information he wishes to present regarding the collective bargaining agreement for SEIU personnel.
Okay, wait a minute. We're on the KCPS audit. I think so.
My script is wrong. Sorry, let me go to that page. Okay. Oh, okay. So, there is a video highlight, um, yes.
Thank you. We just did the video highlight for our audience. And so, at this time, we wanted to have our auditors to come up and present to the community on our financial audit. Prior to having these individuals come up, I want to first and foremost thank our staff. We've had people who put in a lot of work to make sure that these audits are conducted with integrity and that most, first and foremost, that the district is doing its fiduciary responsibility, meeting its fiduciary responsibilities as a whole. And so, Elaine Morgan, I know I saw you in here somewhere. If you could just please stand, I just want to thank you for your work. And the other two members of your team, they're not in here, Angela McIntosh and Terry Glory. I do want to thank all of them for their work. We will, at this time, have a presentation of the annual audit report and the comprehensive financial report. Mr. Kevin Smith, Partner of the Accounting Firm, RSM US, will present the annual audit report along with Ms. Rashonda Fuller, who will be here to, oh, actually, I see him. Thank you, okay. I'm sorry. Along with Mr. Brian Welch, Owner of Welch &amp; Associates. So, we do want to thank both of you for coming in and providing to our community the findings of the financial and compliance audits as required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as our own board and administrative policies.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent, members of the board. Good evening. As the superintendent mentioned, we're here to present the results from the two thousand seventeen audit. We've got a brief presentation to go through. You have a few, you should have some materials within your, within your board materials. You've got the comprehensive annual financial report. You've got a compliance report which summarizes the results of the compliance audit and then a separate letter that's addressed to the board. Here's just a brief agenda of what we're gonna cover. RSM performed the financial statement audit and Welch &amp; Associates performed the audit over the federal grant programs and state compliance. The main purpose of our audit was to give an opinion on the financial statements and whether those conform with generally accepted accounting principles. So, you see, the first item noted on this slide here is that the district received an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. So, that is the highest level of assurance that you can receive as a part of our audit. We've also mentioned just a few things here from a financial summary. Here, there's a few bullets talking about significant changes in the financial statements from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen. Focus on the general fund. Overall, the fund balance of the general fund increased by two-point-five million dollars. Of that, property taxes increased by twelve-point-one million dollars, but was offset by a decrease in state basic aid of five-point-seven million. And also, there was a decrease in federal funding of about two-and-a-half million dollars as well. And there's a few of the programs mentioned up there where there was a significant decrease in grant funding. One also, another thing to mention is that the most current bond rating of the district is an A by Standard and Poor's, which does give an indication of the financial strength of the district. Then the next few slides just show a ten-year history of some of the financial information of the district. This first slide here shows all of the governmental funds of the district, which represents about two-hundred-and-forty-six million dollars of revenue and expenditures of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine million, which, and an increase, as you note there, there was an increase in fund balance over last year. And it was mainly due to the issuance of some long-term debt, which will be spent in the future on capital projects of the district. And the next slide here just shows your general fund. As I mentioned earlier, the general fund fund balance increased by about two-point-five million dollars. Revenue of the general fund is two-hundred-and-twenty million, expenditures at two-hundred-and-nineteen million. So, slight increase in revenue and expenditures remained pretty stable over two thousand sixteen, which resulted in that slight increase, or that two-and-a-half million dollar increase in fund balance. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Brian Welch with Welch &amp; Associates to give the results of the single audit, the federal grant compliance audit.
Thank you, Superintendent and the board. First thing I'd like to do is say thank you again for the opportunity to work again for the district. We really appreciate your confidence and the opportunity we've had to work with you over the last ten years. The financial audit, as Kevin just indicated, they issued one opinion. Well, when we audit your federal programs, Well, when we audit your federal programs, there's a number of programs we audit. So in this year, we had to audit four programs, and on three of the programs, they were the, all right, I should have did this first, sorry. Regular glasses and readers. Sorry about that. So the Head Start Program, the Special Education Program, the Title II Program, all of those received clean opinions. The Adult Education Program, we had to qualify our opinion. And then we also audited your state compliance. There's just education, I'm sorry, attendance, transportation, some financial questions. So there's just certain requirements of some information that has to be reported to the state, and we also had a clean opinion on that particular audit. The next page is a 10-year history of our findings, and as you see, we reported three material weaknesses and three material instances of non-compliance. And you may say, okay auditor, then if you're a numbers person, why does three and three equal three? Because they were the same findings in two different areas. So it's not a total of six, it's just a total of three. And this is the first year we've had findings in the last five years, and it was the first year we've had a modified opinion. Any questions? I wasn't here earlier, so.
I had one, can you talk about the process, no, for this one, can you talk about the process on how the federal programs are selected that you audit? Are they randomly selected, or if we, okay?
No, there's a methodology that's set out, first, you have to look at the prior audit history to determine whether or not you're gonna be low-risk or high-risk. So consequently, because your audits were clean in the prior two years, you're considered low-risk. So what that determines is the percentage of your federal dollars that must be audited. So in this case, because you were low-risk, we had to audit 20% of your federal dollars. If you were high-risk, we would've had to audit 40%. And then we have to take your programs, and there's a mathematical, there's a formula that you take times your federal dollars to figure out what programs are type-A programs versus type-B programs. You want me to do this? So we have to determine which are your type-A programs versus your type-B programs, and then your A programs, whether or not they're high-risk or low-risk, and those that are high-risk, we have to audit. So your A programs this year were, goodness gracious, Head Start, Special Education, and Title II. The B program was the Adult Education Program. Since this was the last year of that program, it was considered high-risk, so that was the reason that it was selected.
And I have one follow-up question. Because of the three findings, and we were at 20%, you audited 20% because we were considered low-risk, does our risk status change?
It will for next year, yes.
To what?
40%. Well, your risk status goes from low-risk to high-risk, which means that we'll have to audit 40% of your federal dollars next year.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes, board member may answer.
Can you talk about in the compliance examination, you may have said this already in your earlier statement, I'm not sure if I caught it, were your primary findings related to documentation, or were there any cost or payment issues that you identified in the compliance review?
Let me think, okay, so the three findings we had were eligibility, which is not a cost issue, so I'll just quickly summarize them, how about that? So on the eligibility issue, in order to be admitted into the Adult Education Program, students have to obtain, have to be a certain age, and we were not able to observe documentation that they were of the right age. The second finding was student attendance. So with student attendance, as the scholars are in class, they have to basically check-in, check-out, so to speak. There was not adequate documentation to be able to evaluate whether or not the students that were in class were actually eligible, so they're somewhat related. And then the third item, which was also, it's not a cost-related, there were teachers who did not obtain the required professional development. I think we did a sample of seven, I believe four of those teachers did not get the requisite hour of professional development. And then there was a required workshop, and of the seven sampled teachers, none of the teachers attended the required workshop.
So given that the issues you identified were primarily related to documentation and data and reporting, do you require that the administration submit their correction plan? Does that come back to your organization, or is, where does the correction plan get submitted?
No, the corrective act, so there is a requirement that the district develop a corrective action plan, and I believe it is, since our audit was just completed, I believe they're in the process of putting together a team to analyze it, figure out the corrective actions, and then that would get reported out. The, in the next year, well, since this program goes away, there really won't be any analysis of the actual corrective action, and that probably will have some impact exactly on what you will do as a corrective action, 'cause the program isn't around. And I do believe that, if I may, that the circumstances that we observed on this audit were a little unique, 'cause again, we've had, you've had some very good results over the last five years, and I do believe this was a unique circumstance with some personnel changes. We did not find that this was indicative of what we've seen, and we would, you know, I can't say that with any assurance that it wouldn't repeat, but we'd be kinda surprised simply because it's a unique, one, it's a unique circumstance, and two, the Adult Education Program is administered a little bit differently, because it's kinda done off-site and not done as part of what I would call the other core programs. So the record-keeping, I won't say the accounting, but the record-keeping and things were done off-site, and so some of the procedures and things that are in place for things that are done with all the other federal programs, they weren't done just because of the way that this program happened to be run. And I think that may be the only program you do in that fashion. Yeah.
Now, the Superintendent, thank you so much, Mr. Welch. Now the Superintendent will introduce the December 20th, 2017 business meeting items.
Madam Chair, we have one item that we're going to ask the board to take action on during the December 20th meeting, and that is our district-wide copier lease agreement, valued at about $1.5 million over a five-year period. So we will bring that item to the board to take action on December 20th.
Okay, now back to this. The Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell for any information he wishes to present regarding the collective bargaining agreement for SEIU personnel.
Hold on, we haven't, Ms. Conley to come up real quick.
If we could, before we move to this next important item, ask you for a motion, a vote of acceptance of the audit report.
This is item number 4.0201A.
I'm sorry, it does, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you.
I was a little.
I got confused.
No, no worries.
We are really happy to be here tonight. We know you've had an opportunity to look at extensive agreement between the district and SEIU related to our most recent bargaining process. You've heard about it off and on. After a really valuable process, we feel like we've brought together a great three-year agreement that focuses on improved clarity around roles and expectations of our employees, as well as redesigning our compensation package to recognize and reward experience with our district and expertise in our district. And so unless you have questions for me relating specifically to the contents of that document, we are ready for you to consider it for acceptance.
Are there any questions for clarification? The Chair believes it may be helpful on this matter to allow for public input before we formally have the motion before the board. This can be done only by unanimous consent of the board members present. Is there any objection to entertaining a time of public input on the collective bargaining The Chair hears no objection, and so we will enter into a period of public comment. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the issues surrounding the collective bargaining agreement, we would be glad to recognize you to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Are there any members of the public present who wish to address the board on this matter? Welcome, you have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Desiree Saunders, and I am the proud cafeteria manager of Northeast High School and an SEIU steward, and we're just here to say that we are looking for a yes vote, we have worked very hard, and at one time, we had about 60 people out there. But we're food service workers and maintenance, and we get up pretty early, so some of them had to go in and go to bed. But we just wanted to say that we work together really hard, and it was a collaborative effort on behalf of your staff, Dr. Bedell, and our staff, our SEIU team as well. But we just want to give you a thank you, I guess, before the vote. So we're just here to say thank you for the yes vote.
It would now be in order to have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the collective bargaining agreement for the SEIU personnel with compensation adjustments being retroactively made to the beginning of 2017-2018 assignment. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, this will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes, those opposed will respond no. The Secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis? Unmute yourself. Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority in favor, the collective bargaining agreement is approved. The Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to prevent, to present any additional information regarding the audit report.
No, at this time, I think we've concluded the presentation. I am thankful for the auditors, and one of the things that we want to make sure that our board and our community is fully aware of is, is that we're gonna always strive to be perfect, try our best to make sure that any corrective actions that need to be taken, that we take those seriously, and I can assure you that the three areas that they found some errors with have already been rectified. So I do want to thank them and for their work, and most importantly, our staff for working with the auditors.
At this time, the Chair will entertain any questions for clarification regarding the report for members of the board. Any additional questions? Clarification questions? The Chair believes it would be helpful to allow for public input before we formally have the motion before the board. Is there any objection to entertaining a time of public input on the audit report? The Chair hears no objection, and so will entertain, entertain a period of public comment. Is there any public comments regarding the audit? It would now be in order to have a motion to approve the 2016-2017 audit report.
Madam Chair, I moved that the board accepts the fiscal year 17 annual audit report.
Second that motion.
It is moved and seconded to approve the 2017-2018 audit report. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, this will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes, those opposed will respond no. The Secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority in favor, and the audit report is approved. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening, so if there's no objection, the meeting will be adjourned. Thank you. We do have closed session, so please report back. Thank you.
Take what, the notebook?